Not too far from here.
Really?
I call the meeting to order, please stand for the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll have roll call, please.
Councilman Muller?
Yes.
Soli?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Goetzen?
Yes.
Mary G.
Yes. And citizen comments, if anyone would like to speak to the council, please do. Welcome, Mary Elizabeth.
Thanks, Mayor, currently.
Ooh.
It's not like you were up for reelection.
Bye.
It wasn't like you were up for reelection.
I mean, I'm always been up for a joke. So, I wanted to come to thank the board very much for taking seriously my comments from last time, and I wanted to come to share some responses. So, Blaine very nicely sent me an email that responded to the questions I had. So, the bar questions can be answered by saying that we don't have a specific roll-up number for costs. I was hoping for something a little more monetary and specific. What I'm understanding, Mr. Hill, is we don't have any idea how much that costs.
Well, it's bits and pieces of different things, so we don't, we, we have, everything's in one budget.
I understand, and that may be the problem. Okay, so, I didn't get, I've never really been as angry as when I read them. Because I had been asking this question for two years, other people have been asking the question too, and I really thought I would get a number. So, then, there's a comment, but they were covered by insurance. Now, I had never thought that before, I had never thought of insurance on down my life. I'll tell you a story. Twenty years ago, I was driving to Benson to go to bed, and a duck flew into the side of my car. The duck died. But when I got home, I called my insurance company, and the woman on the phone wanted to know how fast I was driving, where I was driving, and what was the size of the dent. I said, "It's the shape of a duck." And a person had to come out because we didn't have cell phones. So, I doubt very much that the city just sent in a blank piece of paper that said, "Please pay us." So, I'd like a copy of that insurance line, because that has to be assessed. The city sent something in, and they sent us some money, I want to see it. Okay, all right, now, the van shelters refinished, the bathrooms are, the waiting on van shelter to be refinished, but the bathrooms are done, and they turned them off because of heat. Okay, we continue to see vandalism in our parks, and there was discussion about putting cameras in the parks to watch over the facilities. I'm astonished that you have not already done that. Are you kidding? The people who vandalized that bathroom destroyed it permanently. Because you haven't fixed it yet, I got a tour of the inside because it lived across the street. Someone defaced the walls, they have to be painted, that was special stuff. That will never look the way it did before, never. And it will require more maintenance because it has to be repainted. And you, and you don't have cameras. And what we need is cameras with big signs that say there are cameras, so that people won't do things. And then, he finished that paragraph with, "Also, I don't believe they have caught any individuals responsible and do not have information regarding that at this time." I called Reggie this morning. They have suspects, they're in the process of making charging orders. The city attorney will make a decision about what happens after that. So, they do have somebody that they think, but they have to wait for the cost to come in to know what they're going to charge. So, just wanted you to know that's coming. Okay, Blaine's going to look at the sidewalk, he said, "I will look at this library sidewalk to see what the issue is with regard to tripping." I don't know if Blaine looked, I looked at the minutes, but it's, or the agenda's not there. As for the bathroom, you know that the architect came and all of those things. Okay. Last Tuesday, I was in the library, I go to the library every morning now, because I'm retired, I get to do what I want. The buttons don't consistently work. So, a person who is differently abled was using a wheelchair, pushed the button, the door to the library did not open. So, the person pushed the button again, and the door opened. In the attempt to navigate into the library, there was insufficient time for the door to remain open, so he was caught in the door. The buttons have to work, the timing has to be extended. People have called, and the city has not responded. Now, I appreciate that fixing those buttons is a major deal, but if you can't get them fixed, and I mean done fixed, then you have to ask somebody else to fix them. The city has to pay for that. Can't believe you're not in an NDA violation.
Who, can I just ask, you said, "People have called?"
Yes.
Called who?
The city.
Well, I, I've never gotten a call.
Well, I cannot help the communication within the office.
You know, because we do have, we do have a company that maintains the, the doors.
And they have to come back. Okay, now. I learned two things from my meeting last, two weeks ago. I have insufficient prosecutorial skills to get an answer to a question. And I know, Blaine and I talked before the last meeting briefly, and Blaine said he couldn't understand why citizens were frustrated, because if you come to the meeting, or they could read the paper, and it was very open, this is why they're frustrated, like, oh, I've got a number. Honest to Pete, people are frustrated because they can't get a number, they can't, they know something's happening, but they can't get information. I'm just going to remind you that thirty-one years ago, thirty-three, thirty-four, I started the process of adopting children. And I managed to do it twice, so I am extraordinary. Okay, so, I realized also that elected officials have a very tough job, because you have to imagine a life you do not lead. You don't represent yourselves, you don't represent your friends, you represent everyone in this community who may be different from you, and that's a very hard task. And some of us do that a little more easily than others, but that's what your job is. So, just one final thought, I'm embarrassed about this, and, you know, humiliated when I realized in the night, in June, when I called about the bathrooms at East Side Park, I was so happy that they were porta-potties, I was, and they'd been there till October, but they weren't dis, they weren't differently abled accessible. Parks are public spaces of civic engagement. A lot of people use East Side Park for politcruising, and that prevented people, because they can't use a bathroom. I think you have a lot of work to do. And the doors to the East Side Park bathrooms, when they are unlocked, I don't think people can open them, because there are no buttons. And I know that there are some people who are growing older in this community who don't have the strength to open that door. I might want to think about the accessibility issue. Bye.
Thanks for coming by.
Thank you, Mary Elizabeth.
You're welcome.
Okay, any other citizen comments?
Can I just comment on one thing that she brought up?
Take your due attention.
I, I need to clarify this, because I don't want the public to get the impression that Blaine knows something that he's not telling people. You know, if it's, I have to speak generally about this, because I can't tell you everything I know. So, I will say, generally speaking, if a juvenile is going through the process of a, of a delinquency action, I can't tell anybody about that, there's no records that the public can access about that. And because of that, Blaine would not know that. There's no way he's going to know whether or not we're pursuing a juvenile delinquency case.
And obviously, media would not know.
Right.
Well, the only people that would know would be law enforcement and yourself, so that, just to say that is like, that would never be a council's role, council member or city manager, to give out information on, on an investigation. That's where you call law enforcement, so, I mean, yes, that's a good point to say that, because you're right, that is not, no one is privy to that information. And even once charged, no one is, if it's a juvenile, it doesn't come out, we would, you know, then it's all hearsay, so, yeah, so that, that, you know, talking about that is like, no, that's a non-issue, not a city manager or city attorney's job, too.
Has anybody called or contacted you at all about the door not working at the library?
No.
Okay.
So, it could be, it could be that somebody's contacted Ann about it, and we do have, you know, one of the things that we've done is we put openers on all of our buildings, City Hall, this building, the library, and there's a company that put them in, and that's who they call if there's, but, doors break, you know, and so it could be that the opener's broken, and it has to be repaired, but it's not something where we wouldn't do that. You know, because that's part of what we wind up doing. This one has to be, actually be turned on, you know, to make sure that it's on, but this building is locked almost all the time, because the only time people are, are in here is if they rent it, or if we have a meeting, stuff like that, and, and.
Well, and historically, the library doors, and they may have been replaced, but they were an issue.
Right, oh yeah, they, yeah, they were an issue for a long time.
I don't know about now, but they worked the last time I used them.
Is that something you could follow up with Ann to see if there are people are complaining? Because again, if, if something isn't working, you need to, I mean, the, you need to go, to come here and say that, that's great, that puts it into, oh, we'll check on that.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, so, thank you, I mean, that's all you can do is check.
Okay, any other comments on the citizen comments? Uh, we have no public hearings tonight, we do have reading and approval of minutes from October 11th, regular meeting.
I'll move approval of the regular meeting minutes from October 11th.
I will second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And we have the condensed version of the minutes from October 11th.
I'll move approval of the condensed version of the minutes for October 11th.
I'll second.
Any discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried. We have a consent agenda consisting of audit of city bills, gambling reports, library board minutes, and revenue and expenditure report. And I will move approval of the items on the consent agenda.
I will second.
Any discussion?
I just have a question on line item twenty-four, custom fabrication and repair on the scoreboard. Is that something that come out of our funds, or was that from a baseball association, or?
Uh, no, that's out of our funds, so, and there'll be at least one other bill, so it was, that was a project where originally, we were going to do it all in-house, and then, uh, this is actually for the, the metal work that had to be done for the, the posts and stuff.
At Wells Park, correct?
At Wells Park, yeah, and then, uh, so there's a little bit of concrete work that had to be done, and actually, Mac Byer is, is the one that helped facilitate that, so there'll be a bill coming in on, on that. Um, he, he does a lot of work with the baseball association and, and things like that, and so, the association paid for the scoreboards and all that kind of stuff, and then we put them up, and, and then there'll be some wiring that has to go in next spring.
Okay, thank you. I just said gambling reports, and it was gambling reports from Morris Hockey Association. Um, any other discussion on any of the items on the consent agenda? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. We have no petitions, requests, and communications for ordinances and resolutions. We have a resolution adopting the city of Morris, Morris Transit Updated Drug and Alcohol Testing Policy.
Yeah, this is required by the federal and state government as far as the transit program goes, and from time to time, there's changes that are required to be made in our policy, and, and this is a resolution to do the updating on that.
I'll move on the resolution adopting the city of Morris Transit Update, Updated Drug and Alcohol Testing Policy.
I will second that, any further discussion? Thank you, Whitney, for your work on this.
And where are we doing the testing now, is that actually in City Hall here?
It's at the fire hall.
Fire hall.
At the fire hall. There's approval, approved bathroom there.
Oh. Okay. Okay.
Any other comments? We'll have roll call vote on the resolution, please.
Councilmember Muller?
Yes.
Soli?
Yes.
Miller?
Yes.
Goetzen?
Yes.
Mary G.
Yes. City managers' report.
Yeah, I'll, actually, I got one item that is not on here, we actually met with FEMA today, so, um, it was a very good meeting. The, the individual that's the contact for us, that's going to be putting together all of our disaster, uh, request items, is actually a supervisor of all the people that do that, and so, very knowledgeable, very easy to work with. There were four different people from FEMA that were there, talking about the different aspects of it, and Russ was there, and Ryan was there, and myself, and Whitney, and, and we'll be putting together all of the documentation that they're going to require for our disaster relief money. Uh, and, and it's going to be a lot of work, but, uh, we've done a lot of the work already to make sure that we're ready for it, so that was a very good meeting this morning, and we anticipate, hopefully, it'll be done by the end of the year, the, the requests, and all the paperwork and everything. And just one quick note, you know, sitting down in that meeting, you know, one of the things that we identified is it sounds like the additional money we spent on the fire hall roof may be covered by them, uh, because basically, uh, we were going to repair it back to the way it was, but then we identified the need to readjust the roof to make sure that we don't have that kind of a problem in the future, and that was one of the things that they said was an allowable adjustment that you could make, and so, so that was nice to know that we may be getting some money on that. Same thing with the, the airport facility, and then, actually, we talked a little bit about depending on what happens with the generator situation out at the, out at the wastewater plant, and possibly our lift stations. So, it's always good to sit down with experts that know and understand how all the federal funding works, um, so that we can get at all the requests that we need to make. We're going to have the work session on Thursday, so I'll have an agenda when we get there for that, and department heads have been invited to that. As you can see, the group, group health insurance, um, was not good. Uh, you know, our, uh, health insurance rate is going up about forty-nine percent. We did go out and look at the major carriers, and, and there isn't a better rate from the major carriers. Uh, and realistically, um, and I'll talk about this on Thursday in the budget work session, but peep was lower than the major carriers, a lot lower than ma, major carriers, and that's the reason we went with them, and really, if you look at their rates, now they're adjusting up to where the major carriers are, and we know and understand that the major carriers haven't really adjusted rates up a lot. You know, if somebody has Blue Cross Blue Shield, I think they were seeing maybe a five, six, seven percent increase. Um, so, there, there's two other, two other insurances that we're going to look at. One's Lakes Country Service Cooperative, we were a member of them before. And then there's Prime, what is it, Prime?
Prime West.
Prime West, out of Alexandria, um, we haven't seen those rates yet, but my guess, I think they're, uh, Lakes Country has got Medica as their provider, so it could be that, could be that we maybe find one of those two, but we'll, we'll see, I think that information's going to come in, in the next couple of days. The improvement project is pretty much done for, for now, there's a couple of things that they have to tweak on, and then, uh, you know, we'll finish everything next spring. Uh, I did get an email today from the AFSMI union rep with the draft memorandum of understanding about, um, we talked about raising the liquor store clerk pay, and actually, if we made that fifteen dollars an hour, they would surpass the library one and the, the airport manager, so I think throwing them all into one line item is probably the way to go, so I'll probably have that free at the next meeting, and then, the, the one item, I did get a call today from somebody on East Seventh Street, thinking that we're going to have a discussion about East Seventh Street tonight, and I said, "It's just an informational thing at this point," but the state of Minnesota is looking at, we are on the project list for funding for 2024, but we don't have a project planned out yet, uh, and they're talking about maybe bumping that up to next year, but there's a lot of work that has to be done to figure out exactly what that project's going to be. Uh, and we haven't done any engineering or anything, because as you know, once you start doing engineering, you're going to start paying out money, and, and the plan was to do that next year, so we'll take a look at that. Jeff Kuhn's going to talk more with them about that, and, and then we'll see what happens. We'll go from there, so, a lot of, a lot of, a lot of things happening still. And then I would just open it up for any questions you might have.
I just have a quick question in regards to what Mary Elizabeth was talking about in the, you know, we had the gal here this summer who, that wasn't our issue, but more businesses with the handicap and serving all, all folk, you know, being accommodable to everybody in the city. What, you know, handicap bathrooms or doors, and this is an issue in all our parks, is it, I mean, is there, I mean, there's a huge expense to adding a handicap door, but how, is there grants for that, or, I mean, or not? It's just the city's responsibility to?
So, what, and, and one of the things, you know, that, yeah, we'll talk about on Thursday, too, is the next step for the library is to do a study on what needs to be done. One of the things, I, I did, I did go online and look at the, the ADA requirements for public facilities and stuff, and one of the things that's important to understand is if your facility is not handicapped accessible, it doesn't mean you have to drop everything you're doing and spend whatever it takes to make it handicapped accessible. Um, actually, when she's talking about the bathrooms in the parks, um, I'm not quite sure, you know, exactly what needs to be done there to make them handy, I, I'm not aware that there's many parks that have electronic openers for park doors. You know, so those are all things that you take a look at, at the same time, um, you know, one of the things that the architects did provide is some, some insight into Wells Park. On Thursday, we'll talk about that, but Wells Park, we have a couple preliminary ideas of what could be doing, be done with the concession stand over there, because it's not really handicapped accessible, but if you build a brand-new facility, and actually, somebody told me this morning, it's like, Wayne, what about, you know, out at the fairgrounds, they have that very big bathroom that was built there by, where they do the, the, the cattlemen do their steaks and stuff like that, and it's like, do we need a fancy brick? You know, you know, they're very expensive, because, uh, you'll see that the estimate for maybe doing a new bathroom over at, uh, Wells Park is probably two hundred to three hundred thousand dollars, and right now, construction costs, uh, we know and understand, construction costs for commercial buildings, it's like three hundred and seventy-five dollars a square foot, it's very expensive, so then, you know, but we have to look at, what can we do, you know, in these places? And, and I think, you, you, I think that's one of the, as people bring stuff up, we can take a look at it, because I think there's some good ideas for over at the library, and like here, I think the bathrooms are pretty much handicapped accessible, they might not meet today's code, we know, we've seen that before in construction projects where, you know, the, the handicap curb cuts change depending on what the standards are, and when you do a project, you redo them, but you're not required to go redo them all, so, so it is, it's important for us to continue to look at all that stuff.
Yeah, and that's the nice, I mean, when people come, and then it puts it into, okay, and maybe the, the ticket would be just to get a handicap porta potty.
Right.
I mean, that, that's, that's a solution that would be like, okay, then that's.
That's a great idea.
Um, yeah, it is, it's like, oh, okay, but not knowing or not thinking about that, so.
Because they, they have them.
Yeah, they do.
But it's bathrooms concession stand at Wells Park, we were just talking, saying, I think, just so we're straight on it, it's not just a concession stand, but, and I'd mentioned at one of our park board meetings on the possibility of getting rid of the concession in the existing building, and that's something we were going to look at with an architect, to make that whole building bathroom, because from the outside, it doesn't look that bad, I don't think, I mean, it's, it's a decent-looking building, and it'd be a lot cheaper for us to build a concession stand, I would think, versus a bathroom concession, but just what the cost would be, or if there's grants available, so just some legwork on that.
Right.
Great, good. I see we have some, uh, any other questions on city manager report, comments? I see we have some information on, where did that go? Uh, there it is, uh, canvassing board question, I think that answers our question, doesn't matter, anybody can sit on it.
Everybody can sit on?
So, we have, uh, under informational items, we need to set a canvassing board meeting for November tenth. Is there a special time on that that?
No, I think the last time we did one, I think it was at noon, wasn't it?
I think they did it at ten.
Or ten, this is a Thursday?
Three of us, or it wasn't, we just needed to have a quorum, we have to be in.
Yeah, we had.
Yeah, I think you just have to have a quorum.
Maybe it was at noon, didn't we do it, I think the one I sat on, we did it up at the courthouse.
Yeah, that's a, that's the county one.
County, yeah, the county has one, too.
And we have to have representation there, also.
Yes, we.
This is in addition to that.
Yeah, this is for the city.
City, okay.
And that was county, I haven't heard when that is.
Okay.
I'm, I'm not sure when that is.
I don't know either.
Yeah, I haven't seen anything come through on that either.
So, you want to set it for November tenth?
I'm good with that.
Yeah, what time works for you?
I can come whenever.
I'll let him tell me, I can come anytime.
I'm retired. Got to keep rubbing it in.
I guess if I was required to be there, it'd probably be right away in the morning, if we could, just to get it done, if.
I'm fine with any time you guys want to do.
But if you have a quorum, don't change nothing for me.
It's like seven-thirty right away in the morning?
Seven-thirty, eight, eight o'clock.
Eight o'clock?
Yeah, but if we have a quorum, that's fine without me.
I'm, I'm good with eight o'clock.
I'm fine with that.
It's awful early, but, yeah.
I, I figured that would come from either you or him.
One day a week, let's get up by seven forty-five.
Short timer. Okay, speaking of that, I'll, or we can finish that, and I'll bring up my next, but, the eighth with the election day and our council meeting, is that any issue with us?
Yeah, we have to be done by six.
Okay.
Yep, the same as the primary, what happened with the primary.
In prior years, we had, this was a, a voting place, so we couldn't have a meeting.
Yeah, that's true.
Yeah.
Well, and it's not, you, you know, usually, it's, it doesn't always conflict with the city council day. But yeah, you're right, this used to be a polling place.
Yeah, well, it's, yeah, it doesn't always, but it mostly always does.
And the canvassing meeting will be here.
Yes.
Yeah, so, I'll make a motion to the canvassing board, there's no motion on that yet, right?
No.
No.
I'll make a motion on the canvassing board meeting except for November tenth at eight o'clock AM.
At council chambers.
Right here at the council chambers.
I will second that, thank you.
Any further discussion? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And we have a budget work session, is, isn't that already set?
Yep.
Yeah, okay, so we don't have to.
Yeah, that's just reminding you.
Yeah. So, we're okay for the next meeting, and on November eighth, which is election day, we just got to be done by six.
Yep.
Okay. Okay. I don't know if I missed it or not, uh, Wayne, the West Sixth Street Boulevard restoration, is that project done?
I believe so.
Because that boulevard looks like crap.
I can talk to Jeff about it. There wasn't much of a boulevard.
Nor there wasn't. They put a little, they put a little dirt down and I don't know if they were supposed to seed it or not.
Yeah.
No, they think they can seed it this late. I think it's gonna be a temporary.
But this is, project was done last year. The one over here.
Yeah. I, they put a lot of gravel in there and didn't really put nice dirt, so there was nothing you could do with it.
It's not very good. But anyway, anyway, yeah, I think of the.
Yep, yep.
We should have a warranty or if something's not right to, to fix or replace or to get it done.
I, I don't remember a pay estimate coming through with that because that'd been a Riley's thing, wouldn't it?
Yep.
We had a final on that one. Final estimate. The Yankee tree is still open yet, just waiting for a last.
Was there anything in there that said they had to put dirt in the boulevard or anything like, refilm?
Yeah, wherever the boulevard was, that's what they're supposed to be doing. We can get them to come back and fix that.
Well, okay, a minimum, the city guys should come and take care of the boulevards around the railroad tracks.
Right, yeah. Because I don't, and I don't know if the tree board talked about planting some trees or?
There wasn't good dirt in there.
There's one tree on, on.
That's why.
Did they plant one?
They planted one.
Yeah.
I don't know about the other ones, but.
All right.
The weeds are pretty high there. Of course, now they're frozen. The, the weeds are going down now, so.
I just talked to Joe one night uptown and he'd commented that he was told by somebody from the city, and I didn't ask who, but that the city was gonna take care of that, that they did not have to do anymore with that on West Sixth. By the tracks there, so just, yeah, communication and follow-up on it.
I'll talk to Russ.
Hey, and since our last meeting, has anyone been down Main Street and noticed on like Second Street there? The greenhouse is gone.
I don't mind the turds.
Yes, of course they have, yes.
Yeah.
Looks great, looks great.
It's been a long time coming, but.
Yeah.
It's a huge rot.
We talked about it earlier, but sump pumps, we know the first, everybody out there, the first.
November first, sump pumps.
November first, sump pumps.
Can go inside. It's not a mandatory thing.
Can go inside.
It just can't be pushed out to the sidewalks and road to create ice.
Well, places like this, though, you don't have to worry about it.
I put mine in my yard. Of course, I got no water in it, so it doesn't matter. Anything else to come before the council? Hey, six o'clock tonight is, uh, Friends of the Library meeting. We could still make it. They've got, uh, desserts and, uh, and treats, I think. Anything else?
Desserts and treats.
I, that's what I thought I said. Um, meeting adjourned, thank you.